Okay, so we are out of executive session. Per for under one to nine point six six zero two.
You said one two nine is one nine two.
Oh, okay, I will start that again. We're out of executive session or is number one nine two dot six six zero two. For NCA. No decisions were made for this floor discussion purposes. So, we are to adjournment. If a councilor would like to adjourn our inspector council meeting, I mean, go into. Our verbal ban.
I move that we adjourned the executive session.
Counselor. Counselor Arber Bag made motion, Counselor Moody second motion.
No discussion on adjournment. Not at present.
Counselor T. Verbaic, have you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Ferguson?
Aye.
Counselor Marie?
Aye.
Counselor Arver Bag, have you voted? Thank you, counsel, that was part of special council meeting. At five thirty nine. Into hour. We are now entering our main thirty work session agenda. During your work session, no public comment. Section one, are you?
But do we want a, a break, or is everybody good? Searching one thing. Hey, how much you need? How much you need?
Roll it up.
Hey, how much you need?
Did you have a Sunday game today?
There's no right answer.
Take the whole, okay?
That's wrong. Yeah, remember it's single flies.
Yeah. The devil's fault. Maybe they're hot.
I hold.
Cheryl.
What are we doing?
Come on, come on. You're part of it.
Sydney gets an icebreaker thing, huh?
I'm thinking it might be a team building experience exercise.
We'll be going about the standard circle and I have to close my eyes.
Lean back. That's next.
Anyway, we lose the other counselor.
What other counselor?
He's not, he's on medical leave.
Oh, got medical leave.
Okay, so, we're gonna go around the room, and for every square of toilet paper you have, you tell us something about yourself. So.
So, you got one page.
So, I'm gonna start. I have a dog, a cat, and a bird, and my dog's name is. Well, I'm telling you one thing about me, about my animals. I'm telling you one thing. I had a dog, a cat, a bird, and my bird's name is Petri, and my dog's name's R2, and the cat's name's Moco.
I'll go next, I guess.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they look like normals.
Six. Um, I was born and raised in the Bay Area, California. Is this something that, that like, nobody knows about yet?
Whatever, no, it's just whatever you want.
Born and raised in California. Nineteen years clean up of meth after twenty-three year addiction. I'm the owner of a coffee shop here in Mitchell. I also have the same cat, the same dog, the same bird. I am the proud owner of a hot tub for the past three months, which I've been lucky to get into one time. I just joined a car club called Mop, Toxic Mopar Club. They actually came by, saw my car, and gave me a card, invited me to join their car club.
Patty?
Thank you, I don't. Senior? Cat lover? Like purple? All shades of purple. Grandchildren? My oldest grandson graduates next week.
Like, from high school?
From high school.
Wow.
And he is six foot seven.
Oh my gosh.
I can't hunt anymore. I had a TBI, and I can't shoot a gun anymore. Things. I like learning. Books, computer, all kinds of learning, excites me.
What's your favorite food?
Chinese. Yeah, so good.
Thank you.
Share one more.
Oh.
I like being a good person. Um. I have one younger brother. I was born in Hawaii.
Wow.
I'm. I've torn my ACL and my meniscus. All in one go. I'm still in college, graduating next June. I've worked in food service and caregiving for adults with disabilities. And. I like watching sunsets.
Aw, thank you.
The older brothers. Five kids. Eleven grandkids. Love to hunt, fish, and love to do yard work.
Did you have three squares?
Five.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you for sharing.
Hey Greg, I got a team yard work.
This guy, this was a part one there.
Yeah.
I like the little things.
Thank you, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, two squares or one.
He's calling it one.
Super small.
Or did the toilet paper tap? On me, I think Kathy. Born in. Yakima. Grew up in Portland. Worked. Construction in Portland. Came out here in two thousand. And told my brother to have a yard sale. Well, my first job here was down on, down in Twickenham on a ranch. Now I work for the city.
Some of us are new, and some of us just haven't been together, and I thought, you know, would just be kind of. A good opportunity to get to know each other, and then one more icebreaker. Maybe. This might be something that might help us all work together if we know. Something about the type of person that you are, like, I, you know, maybe you're a neat, or maybe you like to have information a certain way, or maybe, you know. Yes, fascinating, or maybe you like a certain pen, or whatever it is, but. So, I'll start. If you really knew me, you would know that I'm the type of person that. For me, everything has to be organized and clean in order for me to work, and if things are not organized and clean and working ahead, then things are very chaotic for me. But as long as things are clean, then I can take on anything.
My turn.
Your turn.
I do have a procrastination tendency, which I'm aware of, which I'm working on. I'm very non-confrontational to a degree. I enjoy. Open lines of communication with people. Like, be very truthful in everything I do, very transparent for reasons. That I have nothing to hide. I just stated I was a methodic for being playing nineteen years after twenty-two year. Very hardcore use of math. So, I, I'm a procrastinator, and I'm not the neatest person. I'm very honest, very truthful, and very transparent. I enjoy people asking questions, and I have nothing to hide.
Thank you. Patty?
I'm a. Community oriented person. I like the truth. I don't like lies. As long as you tell me the truth, I can handle it, whatever it is. But if I'm finding you lying. I'm gonna let the dogs loose on you, and I don't have dogs. But, yeah, I mean, I let the truth, let the truth hounds after them, you know, because that just really. That really upsets my apple heart when people lie to me, you know, I mean, I can, you know, if. If it's this, if it's that, even if it's shaded and jaded, you know, makes me have a big at my teeth, I'll get over it, I will get over it, but boy. Lie to me, and boy, that's just. Stick in my craw.
Really value communication, good communication, and I'm a really big believer that that solves most problems before they start. I also really value and enjoy asking questions, I'm a big, just to clarify, person. Want to make sure that I have everything in order in my head, just so I don't get mixed up, it makes me a lot less stressed, and.
In theory?
Yes, in theory. And I have a. Objective, or I guess strong sense of justice, and like, right and wrong, and like. We should do the right thing because it's the right thing to do, and people deserve, you know, basic stuff, and so, I don't know, I'm a humanitarian, I guess, in that way, and in the way I believe, so. Thank you.
You open my closet? There's his shirt, front of the shirt, faces one direction.
Oh, my guy, right there.
That's it.
That's it, okay.
It makes me wanna go radio.
Ron?
Well, if you really knew me. You know I'm the type of person don't like talking.
That's a clever one.
Yeah.
Hell. Most people only know me. Don't know me. Certainly, how many more friends do I need? No, I'm the kind of guy that I never want to be. I always wanted a solution, I wanted help. How I was raised. I had four or five lawns, I had them all, never made a penny off. My dad's, your husband died. Sorry, it's crazy. I'm sitting up here again. This is the first time we come in this town. In a bad spot. I broke. Things turned around. So, I like, I was a little bit part of that. Something a lot more.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Carol?
The toilet paper was in there. But he didn't get a.
If you really knew me, you would know that I'm the type of person that.
I just wanna do my job. I'll be fine.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Update for new counselors, Q and A, the, and new counselors, have any questions? You may be wanting answers to without. Having the hospital Sierra, you know, there are meetings, you know.
Is everybody good with? Especially you two in the middle, are you guys good with your emails and, and you're getting some training down, or?
A little behind, but I'll catch up next week.
I've registered with LOC and CIS for my account and everything, and I've set up. I don't think I have any questions.
How about you, Ron?
Oh, I'm, I'm. I'm agenda. It sounds like you can talk to this building.
Yes.
You could probably.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I've been reluctant, I mean, I know you're so damn busy today.
If you are able to help do some of that stuff, that would absolutely help a lot, that would help for my time, yeah.
I'm yours.
But.
Yeah. Yeah, that would, that, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. And then also, I guess I do have an question, for trainings that I have already completed, what is the process for that, again, to satisfy that?
I don't think, I don't, I don't, well, sorry, there, on CIS is, that you can get search, they can see when you've registered in your account that you've completed tasks. So you can watch it on YouTube, or you can do it in CIS, but CIS's site will prove, and I think you'll get a certificate, so it will prove, like, yes, I have done. The, the, I think, just think it's slightly different, there may be a little bit of Q and A for CIS, and then, so like, when we did the harassment training. The questions were, those were designed for one person to be taking it, but I think it was appropriate to show, like, you know, everybody signed in and went through the whole thing, so you can do that same thing, they have a lot of resources in there for, they have specifically elected essentials. Amongst other, you know, things that you can do, so that will prove that you've done it. But I, I think a self-declaration too is like, yes, I have watched all four videos from LOC, or, you know.
Right.
That kind of thing.
And that's just all within their website?
Yep.
Well, we can get clarification from.
I, I, I will, I will, but for right now, so that people are, are at least getting the information. In order to conduct business.
Right, and hopefully, the sooner we're, everybody, we're all done with our time, the sooner we're. Out from underneath there.
Probably not.
Probably not.
I mean, yes, you'll have those things checked off, a lot of those things are easily checked, it, and I will have to find out how they would like to have proof. I just haven't got there yet.
Okay, thank you. Land acquisition resolution.
So, as you can see, I put in the last resolution that I could find, and of course, it's not signed, if there's a signed one, I don't know where it is. I thought it would be a good idea to probably revisit this, it says twenty-fourteen is the last one, so that there's a concerted effort between you guys on where you would like to see this. Moving forward, so that if it doesn't align with the resolution, then we can go, you know what, that's just not what we all agreed upon, you know, and so we need to focus our energy on this one thing, will it ever happen, who knows? But at least, when you're getting presentations, when you're getting people coming up to you, when you can say, well, the council, you know, would like to focus on the, this area, or. What have you, and I think, and we were supposed to come up with something. For the last time, or when Michael O'Casey was here, giving a presentation, you can go back on our YouTube page and watch that land acquisition meeting, if, if you would like, if you were here, or if you.
Land, it was all for this, really, like, we have questions, and they were like, oh, you do, well, I guess I have to go ask the other person.
Which we never got any answers to anything back.
Yeah, and it was like, it was, you know, I wasn't a county then, but it was, this has been, obviously, it's been since twenty-fourteen, so it was kind of like.
That's still have the same question, yeah.
So where do we stand at this?
Probably the same place we were in twenty-fourteen.
You know, we've been at this for so damn long, it's taken up so much time, and I'm getting to the point where I don't want to chase the damn carrot, and.
I, I, me personally, as a mayor and being involved in this, I'm at that point too, because that carrot just keeps getting dangled. It's been dangling for twelve, twenty years, so I've done it. But it is. I think it's in our best interest to stay involved, to where, if we do, you know, we do have. And it's a dead dog, so trying not to use that phrase of we have a dog in the fight. It would be advantageous for the city to be able to acquire this property.
Yes.
There's no downside to it, you know, downside to it is the size of the area, and what are we gonna do with it, everything like that, so, with this resolution, you cannot find a signed copy of it anywhere?
I remember saying that.
Yeah. For all I know, that's signed and sent off somewhere, I mean, this is the problem, is that I go open up the resolution folder, and I find a bunch of blank whatevers, or they're stored on the computer, or it, it is very disheartening to go try to look up previous information, and it's a lot of what I find.
And that's because of the. Record keeping practices of these fires.
I'm not gonna point fingers, I'm just gonna say, I.
I just wanna just like, this is annoying for him.
Yeah.
Because you should be able to pull up the signed copy of this.
Yeah.
Either on the computer, or using. Copy of it.
And yeah, I do believe it did get sent on to Senator Mercury's office.
Probably, probably that was the reason that you needed it. Here, here's what, the other option is, you can, somebody could probably contact BLM, and under this public fund, public land fund, where you would have to pay anyway. You know, could we ask them to just declare that hundred and fifty-six acres as surplus property, forget the triangle, and the, and the leases, and the grazing, and all of that other business, that we really don't have any business being in, it was sort of like, we need your support. To do this thing, and in turn, you're going to get this land, but now, to find out, you're still gonna have to pay for it anyway, if we ask them to declare it, kind of like ODOT property, can you please declare this property ODOT property, and then, could we?
Surplus.
Sorry, surplus property, then could we purchase it under the public fund for very cheap?
Ron, you have your end of. I, uh. Got given names from the gentleman in our community, said he was talking with a friend. No, he didn't. I got it through a person. The person that he heard, the guy talking to his friend at BLM, and that BLM guy told this gentleman that they really don't want the property. That mayhaps we could just. Have them give it to us. It's, it's the cost, the responsibility to them, and they'd rather not have it. That's what I heard, and so I'd be willing to go talk to that person, as a city council representing the city, that was okay.
I, I think that'd be great to see where BLM is with. How they would like to move forward, because it sounds like, either way, they don't really care what happens to it.
I think a resolution would solidify that, if you went with a resolution and said, hey, look at, you know, we're interested in this hundred and fifty-six acres, but we don't have no business, you know, doing anything with all that other triangle stuff, and here's, you know, this is where, and, and a letter supporting that, you know, and the best written letter, and a really good resolution. The, the state likes to see that, government agencies want to see, even our TGM program, we want a resolution to show that you're all together on this, and I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
So will the resolution consist of what we want instead, or what are values, or?
Yes. What, so you would need to put some uses in there, and I did bring the binder, in case somebody needs to look at it, but I couldn't find the one bill that showed, like, all of the specific things, the one that comes up is just a generic.
Bill is being presented?
Yeah, the hundred and eighteen Congress, the one that was here, when he was here, had like, specific uses, and I think that went from a previous one, and it really doesn't matter what previous ones say, because that's not this Congress anyway.
Yeah.
So, I.
Things have changed up, you know.
So, I just highlighted a couple of things in that bill, but I think it had said, you know, recreational, and RV, RV, and wastewater, some sort of training.
It was, the sheriff's department wanted to put in a training center out there for, you know, police academy training.
Right, yeah. Mitch, emergency manager, stated that there, he could probably receive a multi-million dollar grant to build a. Multi-agency training facility, which would encompass law enforcement, fire, and.
And. Doesn't that say in here too, I thought, I read this beginning today, and I thought it said that if they don't think that you're meeting requirements for the intended use of the land, that they can just take it.
Yes, yeah.
And we have to return the land to the way it was given.
Oh, yeah, if it's, if you are tentative, we have to.
And there, there are specific ways that you can use it under this public fund, or public. And there, there are specific ways that you can use it under this public fund or Public Lands Act. It, they basically want to see an economic, a, um. I forget how it's ordered, Patty brought it there. I highlighted some, some things even in that.
Conservation, economic and community development.
Yes, yeah.
And really that hundred and fifty plus acres, that smaller amounts are often more easily manageable and usable than. Twenty-one hundred acres, Doug, the city engineer, I took my tour because he wanted to see it because he would be. Involved in any engineering project and he said, yeah, he said, if it was me, I'd try to cut it off here, which is about. Three quarters of mile down the logging road where it becomes like unusable.
Yeah.
Or he said, or you could lease the rest of that land for grazing. That, and I explained Doug is we don't know what the stipulations are until BLM gives us the contract.
Yeah. But it's basically going to be this, as you, in that binder is. The section on public lands, and it's going to be very similar for the state as it is for the federal. They, they want to see you use it and be good stewards of the land, basically. And so as long as you're fostering, you know, commercial growth, residential growth, uh. Recreation, you know, the city's growing or whatever that it, you're doing something positive, and that, I don't think. It, realistically, even five years from now, is it something that we could even do in five years? Probably not. We're looking like. Maybe even longer than that out, you know, where, where are we gonna put wastewater, treatment water, RV spots for more. Uh, camping or enterprise zones, we need revenue, and I, I really just want to stress. That it's a revenue opportunity, whether it's a museum or, you know, things. Some culture and historical value as well as, you know, being, the city being able to grow. Cause you cannot do any of those things without a stable water system, and our water system is not stable. This is. Well, I guess we'll wait and see what the feasibility study says. But it sounds like this needs to be a backup system rather than a primary system. And with the system that we have now. And especially after, I don't know what Ben may have told you while they were out there, they're probably like.
He basically said that section of pipe that built nineteen forty-two probably has multiple leaks.
Yeah.
But they couldn't detect it either. There's air in the system with gurgled up, and gurgling took away the essence down to the leak.
I mean, six and a half miles.
Oh, yeah.
You know, plus. It's, it's a lot, it, but also like Doug said, it's going to be, if you put water that your station out there, that's going to be a lot of money. That's a lot of money, but I know that, you know, clean drinking water is really primary too. Backup systems and other things, most places have backup systems and we just do not.
And sooner or later, BEQ is gonna say. Yeah, no more septic. It's just a matter of time before the, the command and shutdown or ability to have septic. And maybe have.
Working towards that, they've been working for, for a while. They think that they're very unhealthy and sanitary. And they have problems and they have leaks, no matter whether they're new or old, and that gets into the soil. And most of us live in places that have porous land and porous soil and this. So it contaminates the soil, so they won't, we recommend to have a new water. Or, um.
We, we don't have the capacity to even hold the amount of water that we're getting.
Yeah.
Right, for water treatment.
Right, right. Sewer system, yeah, yeah, and you can put them both on the same property. Doug said you can almost put them side by side. And, yeah, I, I know, I'm just saying.
Isn't that kind of how sprays is?
I don't know what kind of system they have. I, I do know that they had. I have a proposal up in the office that was done twenty years ago, and it, it's a very elaborate. Uh, sand filter system for the whole city. So you would need space for that, if that's.
And so in theory, we could use this property for that.
The community development, and it's on the other bill, that's what I think, it said on there specifically. Water treatment or something along that line, or wastewater.
Um, yeah, I wouldn't count out the system that we have as our primary. Uh, I think if you're, want a secondary system, you gotta get a well put in with a pump, cause you. When you start pumping water, electricity, using electricity, that's gonna cost a lot of money to operate.
Right, but we.
As opposed to all gravity.
Right, but I think one of the recommendations was to get a well done that we can repair our system. Well, if they, what kind of well has a backup?
Well, let's put the feasibility.
And run, run that.
It's spraying water. Well, it's good, and then you got, then you can go with the backup, if you got a leak, you gotta shut the, uh, the system down. But if it were repaired, it probably lasts another forty years, if the one section wasn't repaired.
Right, but there was also other.
We can't get to it in the winter.
Well, there was also other items that were brought up that was kind of alarming. From the report that we received from. So there, that's another reason why we need to really start looking for either a primary or a backup system.
In which we had.
Center reporting.
I think Gabe, I think the water board needs to have a meeting to, to a formal proposal at our next meeting for. I think we haven't gotten anything except a verbal. Did you ever get a report, report?
Yeah, 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 he gave it over.
Okay, well, that will be in agenda in our next house, in this discussion.
Is there, you guys have, I mean, there's other things that you can do too, I mean, you know. Uh, you're gonna have commercial zone, if we have the water to supply commercial zones, you could put that up on the flat half, essentially an industrial zone, you could. Do your urban renewals, you can, I mean, there, if you have certain things that you would like to go in this resolution, I kind of need to know. Have some feedback.
Run.
Yeah. One thing I probably wouldn't like to see out there. Wastewater, you know, treating your sewer water. Sounds like, well, we're upgrading and marching into the future. We live in a bowl. And in summertime. It's a hundred degrees, a hundred and five, a hundred and eight. They gotta agitate that pool of pool water three times a day. I want to tell you, livability out here is gonna go downhill. So. That discussion about sand pot filtration would seem to be the way to go. Using in Alaska. Claim to sand pot is pee and poo in, drinkable water out. Not me, but.
In theory.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's quite a bit cheaper if you do your labor yourself, quite a bit cheaper than, uh, putting in a septic. Uh, the lady at Fox Art put in. Sand pot quarters felt, and she had skills and she knew somebody in the concrete that was in. They, uh, she had hers in around five grand. One unit. How they work normally is see like at Huddleston Heights, you probably have no more than three up there. Have three to four people hooked to one system. And, you know, actually use it up in Alaska, and then obviously doesn't freeze. And, and, and it's the way to go. I ruined a beautiful weekend. Ran the house, didn't bother telling us about the city of Seattle's. Big lake of poo just across the street. He's dirty three times a day and then.
Well, the, the sand, the sand filter that I was mentioning, it's actually like, one of the ones that goes out. Underground, it's not a catchment, it just, oh, okay. Okay, well, when you were saying.
But yes.
Okay.
It's just, uh, not any can, it's called green. And, uh.
Of course.
And, and that's almost your biggest cost, right? There's.
It's, uh, they call it greens.
Six years, six to ten years.
I guess so, um, if it's okay with the work, if the council, for, you know, their suggestions for the. Update our resolution. That way. In the grace of saving time.
Yeah, cause I know another thing that we had talked about was putting in, um. Uh, solar panels. Up over there so that we could go ahead and go back onto the grid. To go ahead and, which that will also help to satisfy what they want to do with getting the dams off. The rivers or as many as they can up for the rivers. So.
I think it would be beneficial if we could, whatever we do out there, if we could have enough room to. Use solar panels to power whatever's out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think that would be a huge benefit, plus there's many available, government many available for.
Yep.
Green projects.
Yeah, cause I.
At this point in time, that it sounds good, take the solar power, put it on the grid. But you can't do that, you gotta have a whole separate system. You got the dam system and you can't. Run your, your solar power on the dam system. Uh, that's the reason it's not really happening today is. Infrastructure out there. Be quite costly. But your idea, whatever's out there is powered, well, then you don't have to tie into the system, it's all a closed system.
I mean, you might have them tie in for a backup.
Yeah.
In a failure, but I mean, how is solar gonna fail?
See, and I, I think, I think.
You've been reading the news, watching, that's been actually pretty funny.
I think that if you have like a really good plan put together when you go through this conversation at BLM with. Things like, here's, here's our option, solar and water and wastewater, I mean, these are really important. Things and just have maybe even like a little bound, you know, so it looks nice and professional and say, like. We are serious about this, you know, it's just not some, you know, pipe dream kind of.
Rather than them giving it to us, we don't have an idea of how we'll move forward, we're going to them the same. We have a plan to move forward, we want the land.
Yeah.
Also, I was just gonna say too, um. Is it possible to, like, for, maybe for example, the solar, you could do that, but also like. Reserve part of the land to, to allow for recreational use though?
Yeah.
Cause I know, but that's really taking advantage of a lot of that area.
Right, good, like the top portion of, of the airport, that would be great for, um.
Solar.
Oh, yeah.
Solar or BMX has, cause like Doug said, he's worked, he's engineered projects where they. Do bypass within the natural layout of the land, where it's very minimal construction policy, it's like, you know, you. Take a, you know, you make a pass through there, you, whatever in your market, you're done, so.
And the, uh, there's a group from Ben, it's a mountain trail biker club. And they have talked about that, you know, this is just Mecca as far as their. And that they would, you know, they'd either go ahead and build the trails for us or put them in for themselves, so.
Yeah, most of the trails are already there. Lot of the trails already exist, you know, and of course, if it does ever come fruition, we wouldn't have to designate the ones like Rabbit Hole and. Whatever ones already have a name, we need to pull and incorporate those given names by whoever designated those names years ago.
And just another thought question too, um, what, I just don't know much about this, but what would happen with the ranch house that's down there?
That's gonna be, the thoughts are that that would be like an interpretive center.
Oh.
Go ahead and revamp the whole entire thing, make it like a dance hall or a community hall in it. Where it could be rented out for weddings or whatever else, and then go ahead and loan it out. To people that do blacksmithing or things like, you know, hands on crafts, you know, to go ahead and get people back into doing fun and stuff like that.
That would lead into more like the cultural interpretive center, that would be more focused down there for. That type of project.
And the thought and the plan was to go like with what they've done, what the state has done with cottonwood. The state park up at Cottonwood on the, um, on the John Day.
Okay.
And to go ahead and do basically kind of what they have a camping area, it's an interpretive center, it's. You know, it's still rugged, it's still. Yeah, okay, and you know, they didn't, they didn't blitz it up or anything like that.
Right.
It's, it's cleaned up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just gonna mention too, um, we went to the Lewis and Clark State Park, and they have. A really neat two rows of cabins, and it was like their camp.
There was a.
It was an actual camp.
Yeah.
It's a reconstructed.
Reconstructing.
Version of their.
Right, right, and so if that, the school kids were there and that, you know, you could actually go in and see like. It was literally just bunked in like a place near the fire, you know, but it's still those kinds of. You know, things are, are draw a lot of people and, um, something to do to keep people here, to keep tourism here, and so. Um, there's also money for historical, cultural. You know, so I think, I think the, the most maximizing. Hey, you know, don't limit yourself to, but don't overextend yourself either in this, in this resolution, but, um.
Yeah, if you had, you know, to send to the office your thoughts and ideas of. What we can do to present to BLM for an updated resolution, update this resolution, being that it's eight, nine years old. And we're still in the same predicament we were eight, nine years ago, twenty years ago, basically. Anything further on the, um. On that, brand, any land use? Day, update on CIS training.
I think we just kind of already touched on that with the Q and A. And I think we kind of touched up on that unless anybody has something to add. I know we did the urban renewal. Um, portion, hopefully, well, when you weren't here, um, I don't know, let me see if I can. Find. Something to give you a context.
Okay, I have another tissue, she, she's.
Thank you.
Nick Green is supposed to be getting back with me soon. In fact, I thought I might have heard him over the weekend, but he's probably busy with doing stuff, but. He said that he was really interested in, um. This presentation to his group. So, um, I'm looking forward to a consult with him afterwards. And I have looked online in several places, but I can't find where he. What his charges are or anything like that.
Hmm, yeah.
So maybe you could, you know, maybe I could, um.
I would need to invite him for.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
In person, if not counsel, um, a work session.
Yeah.
I've never spoke to him, I don't know, and I, I know there's two that have, two that haven't, and Dwayne. Probably hasn't, um, plus he can, he can give us all his spiel about. You know, like, we're gonna donate our time in lieu of this, or I'm gonna charge you eight thousand dollars for this. But I'm gonna, you know, whatever, however, his presentation, that way, instead of us, you know. Kind of like the whole, you know, that's only the carrot, you know, we're, we keep hearing of Nick Green, Nick Green, but we need to know where Nick Green's coming from.
Right, right.
And then, then we need to move, the council meeting, they're gonna decide on how they wanna move forward. And we absorb it is. Is possible.
Yeah, yeah.
Or is he gonna be doing, giving their services for home or whatever?
Yeah, because, um, there is, you know, every conversation that we have ever had has never had a dollar meant to it.
Right.
A dollar, so I mean, not at all.
But generally speaking, there's always money involved, we all, we all know this.
Well, in, in general, though, I think too, um, like even for somebody to go after a grant, they, still, you just need city support. So for him to continue conversations somewhere else about whatever's going on here, he should still just have a block thing of the full town.
Right, so if, next time you do speak to him, if you could get him nailed down to a, um, we named him dude Zoom, he's over in Valley, right?
No, he's in.
John Day.
John Day.
Anthony Jean.
His office says Eugene.
No.
I know he's still consulting for John Day, but.
He's consulting.
No, his office says that he, I looked on his stuff, his, his office is right in John Day, yeah. Yeah, gave this free aggressive, yeah, yeah.
No, it says on there that he consulted, he consults for.
Okay, so if, if you can get him, you know, down to a, either in person or Zoom or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, notify the office, and we can.
Yeah.
If, if, you know, we need to know where he's at, and he needs to know where we're at, and how we can, if he can benefit us. And we can't really benefit, you know.
That sounds wrong.
This is important enough, and I think we should prioritize that, basically. Our, I guess, you know, see how our Zoom works, and that's a little frustrating when you're trying to put on your best look.
Yeah, I'm, but yeah, well, and it's basically, it would be up to him if he wants to drive on over, that, that's totally fine, and it'd, it'd be difficult for us to load up nine people to go meet with him, and really, we couldn't, so.
What do you mean, he can't communicate? Oh, you said it's frustrating because he can't communicate? Oh.
This is sometimes.
Oh, 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 okay.
People not being heard or.
Okay.
When was the other owl going to be, um?
It's the microphone, and so, um, like I was saying just a little bit ago, I spent an exorbitant amount of time on other things, so I just purchased it on, I think, Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
So, and I, it's also gonna have a tripod, so that hopefully it catches people in the back, and I think it may pick up better by it being just a little bit higher, so I'll try and put it kinda in the middle, so it's not in front of people, but we'll just have to play around with it and see how it works, but I think raising it is, is, you have to have a special screw, you can't just buy any tripod, it has to be theirs, because if it goes too far in there, then you will ruin it, so you don't wanna ruin a thousand dollar device.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? I believe we are done with our work session, thank you, council, thank you, Carol, thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Madam Park.